Doing that, does anybody have any minute corrections?
Well, I actually have Zoom up on my, on my computer, just I'm having a hard time connecting there. We don't have anybody right now who's a participant waiting to get on, so I will continue to fiddle with this, but...
Do you have a correction?
Well, I'd sort of like, on item two, second paragraph. Beth was going to discuss some of the challenges working on New Hampshire's regulatory structure and some of the limitations to the size of solar systems under those regulations. I was just wondering whether we wanted to make it a little more specific. If we could remember, didn't they say one megawatt?
The state limits it to one megawatt.
Yeah, I just wondered whether we wanted to actually put that in there to make it more...
Is that accurate, that we wanted, what was the context? Some of the limitations to the size. I mean, it's fine with me.
Well, I just thought if we knew what it was, it might be nice to just have the actual thing evident, you know?
It's one megawatt.
Yeah, sure.
For no real reason.
Well, it sounded good at the time.
It was, well, you know, the general blessed, kind of awfulness of the legislature in general.
Well, it's, we don't have lobbyists that are as good as people's lobbyists. And so it's like, oh, no, no, they won't ever want more than a megawatt.
I did just get the Eversource data for electrical usage in Lyme. New Hampshire Electric Cooperative was like that. Eversource did almost the full thirty days.
Yeah, well, I think it's in that thing that Conor Jennings sent too, you know, that email that he sent, all that stuff. I think it's in there too.
Really?
No, no, this is, this is billing information from Lyme customers.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Monthly...
Yeah, what was in there was the three phase and how much it could hold and all that stuff, which I couldn't quite figure out how to do that.
So is this blinded information?
Oh, yes, I have no idea how much electricity you're squandering, Mr. Brown.
How am I related, how awkward. All right, so...
What do we want to say?
That's fine, if you want to put one megawatt. I assume that's what we were talking about, but I don't remember. So, any other corrections?
No.
The only nit I'd pick is that he shouldn't really play a PowerPoint.
Yeah, I agree.
She shared a PowerPoint.
Okay, so let's put, let's put that...
Shared and played.
Yeah, I noticed that too, actually. Okay, could you send those to David, those corrections?
Sure.
Okay.
I move the minutes as amended.
Let me write this down, I guess I'm gonna... All right, Rich M. moves. Tim C. seconds. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so, it, what I thought might be a good idea if you, if you all agree, and if not, we'll do something else, but kind of just figure out where, where we stand right now, because we can just go on forever, yeah. You got it?
Now select.
Congratulations.
How do you do select?
Usually the center button.
This is...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This does not look like...
There you go.
It still looks like this old app.
Give it a second, Bluetooth takes a moment to wake up.
Play music.
This says it's connected.
And do you now have two monitors set up maybe?
Do you want to hide?
They go to displays.
I have a Zoom.
Yeah?
Or you can just call them up.
Apple menu.
I mean, when it's back, I don't think it's back till Monday.
And then click on displays, it's moved there.
Quick inquiry.
But he's not, I don't think he's returned, oh, yeah, well, Monday is...
Airplane display. So then he's back here.
So Tuesday. Yeah, he'll be back. No, no, I'm talking about, he'll be back in the office on...
Oh, then like he's called there.
Yeah. I think you should leave him alone at home. Got it?
Oh, yeah.
I hear you, experts.
Not really, but, yeah.
Okay, so you'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what are, what are people's sense of where we are now?
So I wasn't here last week, I did watch almost all the video from last week.
Which parts didn't you watch?
The very Q and A.
Those were the best part.
I missed it, but, um, I thought first off, it was terrific, it was really useful. And it also points out very significant hurdles for what, larger arrays than what we've been calling large arrays. And maybe we should just say, declare victory with converting we have for, well, you know, the small and what we were calling larger arrays. And we can put that forth and give it to the town. Is there any reason, I mean, that's, I throw this out, why not do that?
I appreciate it, because somebody has to go first. And I, I think that's a reasonable idea. My personal reservations with that are twofold. I, I think what we did with that, in, in theory, was good, but we really, it was kind of like throwing spaghetti against the wall. We didn't really, I'd like to have a better idea of what we're gonna get with that. And I'd also like to have actual measurements as opposed to the way we did it, because it's hard to understand that, and it's particularly hard.
Actual measurements of what, sorry?
Instead of, you remember, like with Kirsage, they used, we're gonna take this many, much acreage.
Right.
The way we wrote it was, you had to do all sorts of calculations to figure out how much acreage was gonna be covered, the way we were measuring the panels, we were going from the measurement of the panels instead of acreage used. And I think for our sake, and, but mostly for the public's sake, so that they actually know what, what acreage is gonna be used, that we use the actual measurements. So those are, those are my two reservations with that, but I don't think those are unsurmountable. If David does the mapping, then we can get a better idea of what we're actually gonna get, and, and just changing the measurement regime may not be a breeze, but it can't be that hard.
Well, then we know, excuse me.
I, I think one of the other concerns that we had was that the, the, the size of this was a little bit larger than I think some, than certainly the public, when we took input from the public, it was quite a bit larger than what I think folks were really thinking it was. I mean, they were thinking twenty thousand square feet, that's a half an acre.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about, and, and I...
It translates into three acres.
I was surprised too. So if we, whatever we decide on, we could decide on, on, you know, whatever measurement, but I think it should be clear, not something convoluted that people then have to guess at.
So, so Joe, we're gonna try to figure out where larger solar arrays could go in town, right?
Well, David, I mean, we're, we're not, we're just discussing it, I mean, nothing but...
We have the parameters from what Beth presented.
Right, so they have to be...
It has to be within four miles of a substation and within a thousand feet of three phase.
So that would, I mean, David could figure that out pretty easily, right?
Exactly, I mean, I had said, you know...
Well, he'd also wanna...
Within two hundred yards of, of three phase, but, you know, that was me just spitting my...
That was a, that was a, yeah, yeah.
Place to start.
He, we also talked about the arc, he would figure out the arc, whatever range that would be.
And there may not be a place in Lyme that I can actually, you know, once we get through all this.
Oh, I imagine, but I have a couple.
Bailey's Field is still in play.
I think there, there are places.
Scott Bailey's Field.
At, at Schuessler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's about two point, you know, I, I Google mapped it, it's about two point one or two point two miles from the substation to the Lyme Common. So, that's half, we've used up half of that floor.
It's only, that's, we're less than two miles, Schuessler's less, just under two miles to the Common.
So that's, that's feasible, yes.
But anyway, we're, we're just guessing here, we wanna actually have data where, where we, we don't have to guess.
Well, are, is there, I, I think one of the questions I have is, what is our objective in terms of what we want to regulate and allow versus, I, I think I'm under the impression that if the town decided, the town's people, when I say the town, decided that they wanted to have a large system, then the town could also decide that it didn't need to have any kind of zoning.
Well...
Or it didn't need to, it didn't need to meet the zoning standards.
Yes, if the town, if the town did it.
Oh, if the town government.
Yeah.
Town government.
So, so if we just take a step back, this is, I think, is related to what you're saying. One of the things that really struck me from what Beth was saying and almost everybody else that I've spoken to is how quickly things are changing and how chaotic things are. So, I, you may remember when we talked about the energy chapter, we said, that should be frequently re-upped because things are changing, I think it's the same thing, I don't think we can address, this isn't a one-off zoning amendment. I think this is an amendment that might actually change every year, or if not every year, frequently, because things are changing so fast, and it's, we're not in a position now to address, like, everything, but at least we can address something, I guess.
I'm gonna push back a little bit against that and say that, as a zoning, as a board, we're deciding what uses can happen and what it would look like, and I'm being a little intentionally vague there. But it's easy to say, it can be no more than thirty-five feet by seventy-five feet, or something like that, and no taller than this, and no more than a certain area on the, a lot of coverage on the area. And that, those are things that are probably the domain of planning board and of ordinance and all. And saying, well, what if next year you can get twenty-five percent more power out of the, out of what the technology you can get this year? Why do we care, it's the same size?
Oh, I don't think we do.
So I don't wanna get tied, well, I don't wanna get tied too much into the, into the generation capacity and that kind of thing. I think there is a legitimate concern about size and...
That's what I'm really addressing, is, is, we were talking about, you know, at least by Lyme standards, seriously large arrays.
Right.
And, and that's, I probably didn't say it articulately, but that's more of what I meant, is, I don't think we can tackle that completely with, with where things are at now, but we might be able to, a year or two from now, or...
I have a question. I think we could do a fairly quick turnaround, surveying the town, if they even want to allow large solar arrays up to a megawatt within town. Would not be hard, I mean, people are pretty much connected, looking at their email all the time. If we put up a Survey Monkey or something like that, just to collect some actual data of sentiment of people and, you know, you can say, well, the list serve isn't representative of the town, well, it's got sixteen hundred people are subscribed to the list serve, so most, most people...
I'm, I'm one of the non-subscribers.
Okay, well, we, we'll send you a postcard.
Okay, send me a postcard.
But, but you, you see what I'm saying? So we, so we would know, are we, are we going with, with the sentiment of the town's people?
But, I mean, even, even if we got something right now that said, oh, well, I mean, right now, we can only do up to one megawatt. But even if people said, oh, we want, you know, twenty, twenty acre arrays, I'm not sure that we would be able to do that intelligently at this point, it may not be...
Well, you can, because the state will...
Well, that's what I mean.
But I'm saying if, I mean, it's like up to one megawatt or not, or nothing, essentially.
And people may wanna know, you know, they may say, well, what's, how's this benefiting Lyme, or what's, you know?
Yeah, so we, we have to come up with language, but getting, getting the feedback is, is a good thing.
Well, I think, I think there's two kinds of, two kinds of questions we wanna ask, what do you think about somebody in town doing this? Do you know anybody that wants to? I mean, if, if, or who would even entertain this, you know, Scott Bailey?
Well, we know Scott Bailey would entertain it.
I mean, are the, is there anybody else that would entertain that as a, as a use of their own property?
Why, why do you wanna know that, Rich? Because you're just gonna get people reacting negatively to hypotheticals that we know that from talking to Beth, this is, takes years and years to get them through in that case, with many chances for public input. So, I mean, if we just had a little temperature taking of whether it's something they wanna think about and keep it uncomplicated and with the idea that it would be community solar that was probably used by the town, or residents of the town, in some kind of CPC NH buying it or group that metering or something like that.
Speaking of public, I'm sorry, public input or public...
Public input. I, I think this is both easier and harder than you're making it. Going back to the basics, what does the town want? Town wants green energy. What's the best way of getting green energy? We don't really know the answer.
Well, that's, that's exact, that's, maybe that's the best way of saying what I was trying to say before, is, we don't know what the best way is.
But, but let me add to that. I've been going around in circles on this, I thought the solution was easy. Two meetings ago, I said, don't worry about it, we can be all green within a year. All we have to do is join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, or the Keen Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and they will give us green energy, basically a hundred percent green.
That's one of the choices.
But it's baloney, it's not a hundred percent green. They get to a hundred percent green by using renewable energy credits. Renewable energy credits are not green energy. They are certificates that are issued to the producers of green energy at the rate of one renewable energy credit per one megawatt of, of green power. But it's not green power, the green power has already been sold to somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, that's true, but there is, at first, I got a survey from Direct Energy today. And one of the things they were interested in is, did you get a renewable energy policy? And want, you know, they wanted to see you essentially whether that was a popular, I, my takeaway was, they wanted to see if that was popular. Why would they do that? Because if more people want that, maybe they'll get more RECs, they get more RECs. There is a, an impact on the production, even though it's not as good as it sounds, but there is some incentive that comes out of it.
What did they ask you, whether you wanted, whether you got a what?
They, what policy I got?
You mean whether it was all green?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You didn't get that?
Was it email?
The RECs, the RECs do provide some incentive, but really, it's, it's essentially zero. It's twenty-five or fifty dollars for, for one megawatt. It's not going to drive a developer to develop solar arrays. So forget about RECs.
Well, let's just, let's just, I, I mean, I take your point, it's not, it's not the magic bullet, it's not as, as nice as it sounded. But if, if these utilities are buying RECs, then they're, they're worth something, and...
You know why they buy RECs? They're required to meet the Renewable Power Stat...
The, the other three initials, but they're buying them, so there's an, it's, they've been incentivized.
There is a market.
They've been incentivized, and so there is, there is a play that comes out of them that encourages renewable production. It's not as great as it sounded, sounds on the face of it.
Okay, well, any position that the town could take is to use the, the power aggregation systems that do depend on RECs to deliver green energy, for now. Now, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire hopes to go into the power production business, as I understand it. So, over time, maybe they will be delivering green energy, but there's a quicker way of doing it. Kirsage came to this board and wanted to build a one megawatt array on Scott Bailey's land. Now, what would it do with the energy? What they told us is that they're going to net meter that energy, not to Lyme, but to developers of low-cost housing in southern New Hampshire. The energy's going to be produced in Lyme, but it's going to, in effect, it's going to go to New Hampshire, it's going out of Lyme. If you flip that, what it means is that we could hire Kirsage or some other power developer to build a solar array in Canaan, or anyplace within the Eversource service area, and a second array in the New Hampshire Electric Co-op service area, and net meter that power back to Lyme. That would be real green energy. That would have a real impact on global warming, without having to put solar panels in the town of Lyme. Not that we shouldn't, I think we should, I think solar panels make all the sense in the world when they're on a roof or in somebody's yard, because there's no delivery charge. That really works, but...
Well, Kirsage said actually that they'd work with us if we wanted to keep the power in town.
Well, the second time, over the phone.
But the, but the point is, we don't, we don't need...
Yeah, you did waffle.
We don't need to keep it in town. If we contract with a solar power developer who has an array anyplace in the, in the service area, they can net meter to us. And we ought to find out about that before we come up with a zoning ordinance that invites development here. Development here is no better than development anyplace else in the service areas of utilities.
David, when that, if it's net metered here, is that actual electricity from that solar array coming here? It's not, right?
Well, yeah.
I mean, the actual electricity that's made on the solar array goes into the grid.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not necessary... Someplace, and it's credited to the end point.
In the Eversource, it gets credited within the Eversource area, so then, so we may not be getting that actual electricity, but we're getting...
Well, we, I mean, the actual, let's say you have a hundred pieces of electricity, and we contract for an additional twenty. It goes, it then becomes a hundred and twenty, twenty of that comes to us.
Okay, so we're adding twenty?
Yeah, because, because we're, we're contracting with somebody to produce extra renewable energy.
Right, but that brings up another question that I had, right? People talk about the grid not being able to handle this, but what I don't quite understand, and maybe this is a dumb question, but right now, the grid is handling the electricity that people need, right? So if we add solar or wind or whatever, in theory, something else is taken away, like being generated by natural gas.
Well, I think the problem with the, the problem with the grid is that it's, it's balkanized. There's, there's all sorts of projects that have been abandoned or held up because they can't get the electricity to a place like this.
But we're, we have enough electricity here, I mean, people not gonna...
Think about the size of the, think of it like a pipe instead of a wire.
But what I mean is...
You've got water flowing through the pipe, and you wanna add another supply to that pipe.
Right.
The solar comes and goes, so you, you have to size the pipe to handle the surges. And that's what they're talking about, how much capacity do they have to handle the surge?
Right, but the surge now, they buy electricity from wherever, at a high price.
It's just flowing through the original pipe.
Right, but what...
So then you're trying to add water into this pipe, solar power in a big surge.
So there's more electricity, but, but what if you...
So, so you have to stop and balance, you know, it takes a smart grid to be able to handle that.
But they do that now.
We don't have a smart, particularly smart grid around here.
Right, but they're, they're handling it, in other words, people don't run out of electricity.
Well, not necessarily, if, if...
But we don't run out of electricity here.
You personally don't run out of electricity. If somebody said, boy, I could make a whole bunch of money if I could have a bigger shop or a bigger plant, and I need, I need, well, I need three-phase power, because I'm drawing a lot of power, you immediately write off to the north half of town, because there's only a single phase there. And so if somebody wanted to do something, they gotta call up Eversource or New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
Right, and try to get the same...
And say, so, you know, what do you think? And I bet you it's a million dollars a mile for them to extend.
Right, but if they did extend it, then there'd be, they'd have the power there.
That's a big...
They're not saying, well, they're not saying, we, we're not, we can't do it because we don't have electricity, we're saying, we don't wanna do it because it's gonna cost.
So I think the second thing...
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I still don't quite understand, they're supplying enough electricity.
Yes.
They may have to buy some at peak time, but if we add more, like from solar or whatever, into this, like as Amy says, the pipe, assuming we're still using the same amount of electricity, something else isn't being used, because we're adding...
It gets jammed up, you know, it's not, you've got a surge of, you know, the clouds clear and a big surge of solar power is generated.
During the day, right?
Right.
And that might not be at peak power, so maybe someone goes to waste.
Well, how does it go to waste?
I don't know, if it's not being used, where's it going to go to store?
Electricity is either flowing, or it's light, or it's heat.
Right.
So, I mean, you're gonna overheat your panel highness.
I think you can think about it the other way too, I mean, down in Hanover, because they were always buying aggregated power down there, the town manager used to send out something like, there's gonna, you know, from the manager, the electric manager, there's gonna be a brownout, so all lights off, no AC, and if you can take your, you know, laptop home, do it and turn off your desktop.
In Hanover?
In Hanover, so that we can keep the wastewater treatment plant going and the water, you know, treatment plant going, those are like the essential services.
So this wasn't Eversource that was supplying electricity?
I don't know who they have down...
It could be Liberty, it's probably Liberty.
Yeah, okay, so it's probably Liberty, because it's on Main Street in Hanover, so we were, you know, town offices would kind of like shut down in a way, or even if you could work in the dark or do filing, instead of working on your computer, you could stay.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, California doesn't have a summer.
I never heard about that, I mean, you'd think that would have been in the news or something, that the power was running out of power.
No, it wasn't that we're, it was like the grid was gonna run out of power, so where can we economize, like, for non-essential stuff? Wastewater treatment plants aren't shutting down, but the town offices was powering down in order to, you know, minimize...
So what we're saying is there's not enough electricity?
Not, not for the hottest days in the summer, there truly not. Because they're talking about brownouts, and what it would be, it would be a rolling brownout, I mean, that's happened before in our lifetime, we just don't experience it that much here.
But most of the year, not in the hottest days, maybe the coolest, but most of the year, they're supplying enough just...
Oh, sure.
So, but...
The problem is peaks.
Right.
And, you know, we're just as unhappy with one peak as, you know, um...
Right, but the, the solar isn't necessarily at the peak time, because it's usually evening or whatever, so, so where's all that solar energy going to?
The other problem is that the power lines that run down the road are sized to be just right to handle the homes that are down the road, and they've got a little expansion, if somebody wants to build a new home over there, or even, you know, put in four or five new homes, they'll sweat, they've got that capacity.
Or electric cars, or heat pumps, or whatever.
Well, let's, I'll come back to that.
Yeah.
But the, the lines are all balanced to take the kind of power that's there. If you suddenly take this fire hose of a megawatt of power and you plug it in someplace, those lines may not be able to carry that much energy.
Right.
I mean.
And that's when you get heat and light.
Well, yeah, right. But, but their system is not designed to absorb that much energy from some other source because.
So does this, where does it fit in, for instance, like a place like Kirzage? They were going to upgrade the lines.
They must need to do that and they, or they must say.
So, so to, to.
I don't think they, you know. I was gonna say, they, they weren't going to upgrade all the lines.
Well, they were going to upgrade what they needed.
They were at the very earliest stages of figuring out what was possible.
But, but it, somebody told us that it was very common for developers
Mm-hmm, it is.
to take that cost.
Yes.
That's right. But, and, and so they, they are, you know, there is three-phase power there. There, it sounds like they're right on the hairy edge, but they're four miles from the substation.
Right.
And so, I mean, what it is, the, the lines going out from the substation are big fat pipes. They're big, thick wires.
That's another question, what does the substation do? I mean, why is it?
Well, the substation takes really big pipes, really, um, uh, lots and lots of energy.
High voltage.
Well, high voltage, but lots and lots of energy from the backbone of the grid to the substation and then it runs lines out.
Stubs it down to, to the surge.
Yeah, surge.
To various places on modestly big pipes.
Right.
That's, I'm, I'm using pipes and three-phase. And, and they expect to go about four miles. I'm, I'm, I'm no longer an expert on this, so I'm, I'm using numbers that make sense to me as in my opinion here. They, they go about four miles, splitting off to various houses.
So the substation's within four miles of each other, generally?
Uh, maybe, I don't, that's, that's, that's an interesting supposition. It could well be true, but I, I don't know. But they, they can go four miles before they run short of the capacity to, to absorb lots and lots of energy from some other source.
Like?
A megawatt solar array. So.
So that's why they're saying that we may not, they may not allow a megawatt somewhere.
And the other thing is, I mean, Kirzage would have, might have been the first, first applicant in. So the system might have enough capacity to be able to take a megawatt.
Right.
To, you know, they can bolt, they can do a little bit of pipe bulging there, if you will.
The first one in gets to.
The first one gets in.
That's the prime location.
Yeah, and then the next, next one, whether it's a large one or a small one.
What are we after with this discussion?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Let's.
Tim had questions, who was trying to?
Yeah, but I mean, we're, we're getting really deep into the weeds because.
Yeah, but that, that sort of ties into, you know, where we would be able to handle the problem, you know, that's the whole point of this.
So, we're going to have to gather that type of information, but I think we're at a, a stage of general decisions, which is, you know, one is we could go, we could go back to what we had last year and then work on that or we could come up with something else. But I think it's time to at least get a, a template of what we want to accomplish. Down, oh, the public is back, okay. You know, just get it, start moving this thing along a little because we can spend the whole year on this and get nowhere.
Right.
I, I suggest that we either do nothing or we confirm the fact that home applications are allowed, as a matter of fact, as accessory uses. That's the way Dave Robbins is treating it now, rightly. They are allowed accessory uses. So we don't need to do anything. But if you feel a need to button that up, we could amend the zoning ordinance to talk about accessory uses of solar power. And that's probably worth doing. But I think that the board, and I think it's the board that should do it, needs to learn more about green energy and how best to deliver it to the town of Lime. The town wants it. The town voted for it, it's in our master plan. It doesn't mean.
That's, I mean, I, that's kind of consistent, at least partially, with, with the feed, the feed, uh, right, the feedback that I've, I've been speaking to and reading all sorts of stuff. And I come away with my head spinning because everything is so dynamic and in transition that one expert says this and another just as seemingly credible expert says something that's, you know, spins my head in another direction. So, to that end, I'd like to, at whatever we decide to do, have it within the constraints of what we can, if we can understand it well enough to explain our reason for doing it to the town so that any, almost anybody in town can understand what, why we're doing what we're doing, then I think we'll have a good program. But if, if we don't understand it, it's not good enough.
So I was listening to what David said, and when you say accessory use, that means that there needs to be a principal use on the property. So I wondered if David was contemplating that that principal use would only be a residence? What if it was a business? And what's wrong with having a bunch of neighbors share the purchase of a lot where they put solar arrays because they don't want to have solar trackers or arrays in their yard? So, just.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons, that, that was, came up in the discussion last year. And if I recall correctly, I think that's one of the reasons why we, we took the approach that we did because that cover, I think actually you brought it up, if I remember, that, that it could be something that wouldn't literally be an accessory use as defined. And we ended up with a broader field of, of where that could be applied. But we might be able to adjust that.
Well, yeah, and speaking of just looking at different things, I don't know if you guys saw this email from Andrew Eckerrode at NRG. NRG is the parent company of that company. So he says, hello, Tim, we have two main options to get you green energy. Our first option, choose green, is the option that includes cheap power and REX credits. REX credits are available on ISO New England market. I might suggest that, that other option, Renewable Select, which actually sources energy from a specific renewable source, which would require your, relieve your concerns over REX with Renewable Select Energy Plan, NRG Energy.
So I looked at that and it didn't really explain. It, it, the options seem to apply to commercial or, you know, bigger. They didn't have a, an option for residential.
No, that's because the link was to commercial, there was a tab at the top that you could press on for residential. Because I was like.
So how does that work?
I don't know how it works, but I knew that there was a tab for residential.
But anyway, it would be interesting.
It'd be very interesting.
With all this stuff, and then of course, we've got all this stuff from Connor Jennings, which.
Yeah, but, but that would be interesting because he's saying, or she's saying, that it's, it's actual green energy that's coming to us.
Yeah, Renewable Select, whatever.
Whatever it is.
I was sort of late to the party when you were working on the solar stuff. I, you know, I just was, I tried to help you with that survey.
Right.
Have you guys done the research on model solar ordinances?
Yes.
Solar power ordinances?
Yeah, that's what we.
And do you, do you find anything that addresses one, one megawatt round of ways?
The large size. We went, you know, instead of having three different sizes, we chose two and aired toward the smaller. But Keen has a bigger and so we could go to their bigger. And we came to the point of trying to figure out under what conditions will we allow the bigger? And then that led down the rabbit hole of, well, we don't even know what standards we need. So now we've got a better idea of that, but.
And we, we knew nothing about the more technical aspects.
Oh, no, no, no. So do we want to ask the town again if they want to allow one-megawatt arrays?
The town? Does the town prohibit one-megawatt?
Yeah, well, assuming it sits on its own lot, it would not be allowed because it's not a allowed principal use.
Oh, because it's not an allowed principal use.
I just looked up.
Well, it would also, oh, yeah.
I just looked up Hanover, there's a really pretty site in NHPR, picture of the array, the 1.7-megawatt array in Hanover.
How could it be 1.7?
1.7, it's.
Yeah.
It's 1.72.
If it stays within the municipality, it can be, be up to five.
Oh.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, it's head spinning.
Okay.
Used by the town.
Yeah, and.
It is used by the town.
It's not net metered.
No, no, if it stays within the town and it's used by the town.
You mean the town.
The municipal, the municipal, like municipal buildings.
Right, no private residence.
So Hanover has 97% of its municipal load is covered by solar.
Right.
Right now, which is.
You mean within the, the solar arrays in the town?
No, we have solar in many of the homes as well, like the municipal facilities, but 97% is, is solar. And that's just for electrical, it's not all the heating.
But that was done by the town, right?
It was done, yes.
So, I mean, in short.
It was simply done by the town, yes.
If, if Lime wanted to do something like that, they wouldn't need to go through zoning.
True.
So.
True.
And, and the town is already getting a lot of its energy from solar.
Right.
Right.
And the Energy Committee wants to do all of it.
Yeah.
We did get some data about, you know, the opt-out, opt-in that CPCNH is set up for. And there's four levels, there's like 23% green, 33%, 50% and 100%.
Yep.
And the default that Hanover chose was 33%. And generally across all the communities that have come up to speed, the opt-out is about 1%.
1%?
They were expecting 5 to 10%.
Okay, so.
And Hanover, at that higher level, was still having the 1%.
Apropos to those numbers, and this has a, a margin of error of a bazillion, okay, admittedly. But I just wanted to get some kind of an idea. So, I came up with a, as of today, and if I'm completely wrong, please, you know, shout it out, but that Lime probably is about 35% green. Does that, does that seem outrageously high?
Yes, it's really low, I mean, it seems high.
Okay, so let me tell you. Lime has 12, call it 12% rooftop stuff.
You're just talking about residential load or you're including the school, the town and the skiway and all that?
I, I didn't even go into the municipal buildings.
And what about the skiway and the?
I didn't do that. Although, I, I don't know, this number, this was from Mark. So it may include those, it probably does. But it's about 12%. So, so that's green, okay? New Hampshire Electric Co-op right now is 46% green.
Okay, can I just back up?
Yep.
I have a solar installation and I'm still buying power. So does that count me who still needs to buy power?
Yeah, it's, that's where, you know, 12% is general. Some people are overproducing, some are underproducing, so it's ballpark. Uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op is at 46% and I was told that they provide about 25% of the town. So if my numbers were right, that was about 11 and a half percent. So you, can you, are you checking my numbers?
I'm just reading and delving. New Hampshire Electric Co-op is 46%?
46% renewable.
Okay.
Um, and they provide 25%.
Of the total power?
So that's about 11 and a half?
Actually, 20, I thought EverSource was 80, but whatever.
It, it's in, I, this is a range that I was given and I picked the middle. Whatever, this has got a large margin of error.
Sure.
And then EverSource, the, the target for 2023, the RPS is 23.4.
That's what they're legally.
Required.
Required.
Yeah. And it took, uh, so I took 75% minus the 12 and minus, I, I just guessed, well, I, minus 12 and minus 3, I'll get, it's about 60. So 60% of that, I got 14%. You know, 75, 60 of the, with the 23.4, I got 14%.
14% of the people that are on EverSource?
No, 14% renewable.
Of all the people that are on EverSource?
Yeah, which is again ballpark. And then I have no idea with, with the REX like you and I are on.
We are never going to sign up for it.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just picked 3%, but I, I don't know. So anyway, that adds up to 3, 14, 11 and a half, 12 to, you know. What does that add up to?
25, 230, 25, 30.
3, 17, 28 and a half. It's about 40, 40 and a half, but I'm taking 5 away from that just because I think it's high. So I'm saying 35, 35% green. So I mean, like, when I hear 1% for an opt-out, that's ridic, we're doing 30.
But they're opting out to 33% green, it's not 100% green. Because you gotta pay in, pay more to get, you gotta opt into the 100% renewable. So they're, they're like, there's a lot of people like, oh, that's garbage and they don't even look at what comes and they're just, I'm still getting power, I don't care.
Right.
And it's, you know, costing less.
But, but 30, if this is even in the ballpark, 35% is better than a lot of things that are being offered. And, and I estimated that by 2025, with the, the RPS going up, you know, it could be about 45%. So.
Well, I, I wish I had an option to choose and I don't.
No, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm talking about is we're not, we're not going from zero.
Yes, yeah.
Where we have a substantial amount and it's going to go up anyway. So whatever we do should be adding better than what we have.
You know, it's going to go up because EverSource is going to get better?
Well, the, I mean, New Hampshire, New Hampshire's basically stops demanding that the utilities raise their percentages as of, I think, 2025. But I think they're going to have to change that because it's just going to be too much pressure.
Right.
So I'm imagining that once we get to 45% in 2025, or that whatever that ballpark number is, that it's going to keep going up regardless.
Yeah.
So.
So Evi, you said, excuse me, the Hanover, or the Community Power is going to go with 33% green? Is all with everybody?
No, no, there's, there's, there's four levels.
Right, but, but you said they were going to go with 33%.
The default for a, the town gets to choose.
For the opt-out.
The town gets to choose what the default level is.
So that means that when the people are automatically signed up for 33% and if they want to go higher, but why didn't they pick 50%? Why didn't they go higher?
I, I think, I think you have to think about who the audience is. You've got to go two, two routes and sell it to people.
So they were trying to keep the cost down.
You have to go two routes and sell, selling CPCNH. One is the green power aspect, the other is the money-saving aspect.
Right.
So, so that's what, if, if our, if our buy-in is 33%, we're in that ballpark now.
Well, I'll just say that.
As a community.
We're not, you know, if we're trying to accelerate the process to ensure that we're going to hit our 2030 target, sitting back isn't going to help us, okay?
I'm not talking about sitting back, but I'm, I'm just saying that duplicating where we're at doesn't do anything.
It does.
Okay.
Because you've got, what did you, what did you say our percentage is?
Now like about 35-ish.
35%. Well, that 65%, you would now be adding 33% of them to your, your.
Well, no, because you'd be, you'd be drawing away from, from some of these. But yeah, I mean, I, I get your point, it, it would be helping, yeah, yeah.
If we went with community power, if the town went with community power.
It, it would help, but it, not as much as I, I would have hoped, publicly.
I don't think community power does it for us because that green energy comes from REX. It doesn't come from actual solar power. It's REX. It's a, it's a comforting thing and it's something that. It's a, it's a comforting thing, and it's something that, I haven't looked into it, but I assume that the utilities pushed for, because they knew that they had to meet the renewable portfolio standard. And they knew that they couldn't do it by actually producing green energy. So, they said, well, let's, let's call a, do a thing called RECs, and we can buy RECs. It's like buying a dispensation.
Well, I wanna know, just asking you, you might be like with the carbon credits? Are RECs as flimsy as carbon credits?
Much more.
Much flimsier?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then they're kinda worthless? They're not as worthless as Bitcoin. Well, okay, okay, but you know.
That's like selling a resource.
RECs better than a resource.
So, so I, I sell RECs.
Yeah.
And I talked to Knollwood Energy, which is a REC integrator, I guess, or consolidator. And so, 'cause I asked, well, are we like double dipping? Because I'm using a lot of that power. And they said, well, what it does, it allows the power company to meet that 23% because they have a customer within their system who is provide, who is generating green energy. The fact that I'm consuming a lot of it is okay because I'm in that service area. So, they're basically getting credit for anybody in their service area who's producing this? Who's producing it.
More than what they're using.
But, no, no, no. No, no, just gross.
Even though you're using some of it, okay.
Yeah.
So, it is duplicating.
Because you would be a load, you'd be a load on the system otherwise.
Right, yes.
I would be a load on the system, yeah.
You'd be a load on the dirty energy side.
So, I'm a customer.
Right, right.
And a producer, and, and, yeah, there are times of the day that obviously I'm not producing enough to, I'm not producing anything.
See, CPCNH is just new to the whole market thing, but they're, it's gonna be enabling them to do things like, you know, tap into the hydropower and wind power options. At the moment, it's solar, but that's just because of the facts on the ground. There's taking a small administrative cut from all of this, which will allow them to do things like what, was it Green Mountain Power was helping people buy energy walls?
Right.
You know, power walls, right.
Power walls to increase, as you know, we all know, the better insulation and weatherization. So, having funds for some of those things, also to have funds to level out if there are spikes in energy costs. So, it's gonna be a general, you know, system-wide. So, I think, you know, to get going, it may be a lot of RECs, but I think their long-term plan is to, I mean, they're gonna go around the state and try to find sites for solar.
Hopefully, the long-term plan for all of us is to tap into the wind power offshore, to tap into massive solar arrays when the grid is upgraded to permit it. We're not there yet.
We're not there yet, but let's start someplace.
Yeah, and that article in New York Times about the grid was pretty depressing.
It is.
I mean, it's not gonna happen, from what they're saying.
Well, it will happen.
I mean, not for 30 or 50 years.
The government has to step in and rationalize the grid. We have, as it stands now, it's very difficult. Well, you've read all the things, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But when the federal government steps in and takes over grid connections and grid construction and funds it, then we're going to get the grid that will accommodate the massive solar arrays and the wind.
Right, but that all depends on who, who is the government.
Well, it's all Joe Biden, vote for Joe Biden.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So.
Please, call maybe Rich.
Whatever we do, I think we should be able, it's really important that we should be able to succinctly, and I mean that relatively, explain it to anybody in town who wants to know it. Not with confusing numbers. We have to understand it ourselves simply enough, why we're doing what we're doing, to be able to convey that to anybody in town who wants to know it.
Yeah, or even write something up.
Or, we should write something on guard.
If nothing else, the act of writing it ourselves will clarify.
Exactly.
So, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna ask the question that David asked a minute ago. We could do nothing. It's not, it's not unreasonable, we already permit solar that's as big as the barrage or the barn you could build, substantially is a matter of right.
On, on, where you have an established use already.
Yeah, and, you know, if we had to say, if you've got a vacant lot and you wanna put a barn on it, if you could put a barn on it, you could also put solar on it.
But you can't, I mean, I don't know, David monitors that, but in Hanover, you can't put a barn on a vacant lot, which sounds ridiculous, but it's true, you can't, because it's accessory use to nothing.
But to Rich's point, maybe we could make that doable.
Right.
Or does it mean a variant, the requirements for variants that?
No, we don't wanna, we don't wanna.
Well, yeah.
It's not a hardship if.
No, we don't, we don't wanna create.
So, but, let me, let me, let me, let me.
Yeah, let Rich go on.
Let me pull back, so certainly as an accessory use, it's a no-brainer.
Right.
David says, how big is your lot? What you got?
Yeah, yeah.
Show me, show me.
Yep.
Me?
Yes or no?
I don't.
Well, that's what our.
And, and, you know, maybe we need to say to Hebe, to follow Hebe's thread, we should ask the town, okay, we're pretty, we are completely comfortable with something that's as big as your barn. What would you say to solar arrays that cover it up to a half an acre? And?
And where?
And would it matter where? I mean, we're certainly excluding the common.
Yeah, I mean, there are places we're gonna exclude, but.
You know, the playground, but in most areas of town, would you accept up to a half acre?
Going back to, to where you started, and if we were gonna send out an explanation to the town, and we said, this is what we're thinking for the following reasons. You know, and we can hash that out. And then, anything past that, and here are other options, how do you feel about those? I mean, I think I know what the response would be, you know, do we want five acre, five acres of solar panels? Probably a significant number of people would say no, which.
They'd say where, that was the big, that's the big question, where?
Well.
Because I think a lot of people would say, fine, if it's put in a spot, right, there's a field.
They're invisible.
Yeah, no, but I mean, there are places where they could be.
Well, that place in Scott Bailey's Field was essentially invisible.
What about, you know, Crossroads has a pretty big solar array, and you can't see that, you cannot.
Right.
And I don't know how big that is or how much that generates.
So, that's a question we can ask.
Yeah.
I mean, but that, that's, I think, well-placed, and it's very close to the.
But we can't, but that's from a regulatory, that doesn't help us, because we can't say, it can only go in the following places where, where people in the town and the planning board thinks it would look good. There's, there's no way to write that up.
I get that, but just, you know, we have a big array in town now.
Right.
That nobody knows about.
The public disagrees with you.
I'm sure they do.
Everybody loves solar power, not in my backyard. So, it's, it really is an aesthetic issue. And, and in fact, the planning board has the authority, or the town has, I should say, has the authority to adopt the zoning ordinance that requires that aesthetic standards be met for a solar array. It can be done, it's complicated, but.
It'd be pretty complicated?
Can be done. If you can't see it, it's fine, and then there'll be gradations from that. If you can see it, but in fact, we have a, we used to have a zoning ordinance, and maybe we still do, that says that if, that something on a hillside, on a ridge line, if you can see it for whatever it is.
But that's not universally, this hasn't been universally enforced.
It's, yes, and there's shame on the zoning board.
Well, I, I, that was not where I was going with it. But, but what I'm talking about is, is the effectiveness of aesthetic language is squishy.
If we wanna go that route, let's take a crack at it, let's see what, see what somebody can come up with. But I don't think that that's the right answer. I think the right answer is to produce the cheapest green energy we can, and that's gonna be done by a professional.
Well, right, we already had that conversation, what we're, what we're trying to do is, is trying to figure out how to participate with the public, to explain how we got to where we didn't, and to, to see if they have various feelings about what they'd like.
Good.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're, they're, these are not mutually exclusive discussions. So, why don't, why don't we all write up our thoughts on, on how we would present that to the town?
Be like a questionnaire?
Well, it's more than a questionnaire, it's, it's certainly, it would be a declaration of what, what we're thinking, so that they understand where we're starting from, kind of along with what Rich was saying. And then, we can have add-ons. Do you like, you know, that, that's one possibility, do you, do you want this, you want that?
Crossroads has a 40-kilowatt system, 144 panels.
So, that's not very big.
It's not that big.
It's really very small.
Looks big.
Yeah. Well, there, there you go, it looks big and you can't see it, but it looks big.
Yeah, it does look big.
I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're, we're running to.
So, why don't we do something like, I mean, I feel like we sort of go round and round and.
Well, that's why I wanna take a step.
So, why don't we all take a crack at writing some kind of blurb and then some survey questions? And send them all in before the next meeting, so we all have a chance to look at them, so we're not just looking at them.
I think it's gonna have to be more than a blurb. I don't, I don't think it can be five lines.
That, John, I, I don't care how much it is, but I'm just saying.
Well, I'm just saying a blurb is not enough.
Send it out to Dave, so Dave Robbins can distribute it to us before the next meeting, so that we all read each other's thoughts, and not just be starting from nothing.
Exactly what I wanna avoid.
And then, let's also think about setting a limit on how many meetings we're gonna keep talking about this.
I couldn't agree more.
So, we can move on to the housing.
Yeah, totally on board.
So, I'm still unclear, hopefully, trying to write up.
So, let's just say, you can write up anything you want, but let's just use what Rich was saying. If, if you agreed that, you know, why don't we just make it as simple as possible? We're not at the large erase stage yet, and this is, this is how the planning board arrived at this point. Explain, as if you're talking to your friend, you know, and you're just saying, this is, and they said, what are you doing with the solar stuff? You say, well, right now, this is, this is what we're thinking because of the following reasons, this is how we got here. And then, you, if you can add anything to that you want, or you can start with, we, we want, you know, I particularly, I mean you, could say, I want, you know, 25-acre solar arrays in line for the following reasons, this is why I think it's a good idea.
My, my thought would be that if it starts out with, the planning board is considering modifying the zoning ordinance to permit solar arrays, we have a number of options that we're thinking about. There's a small system that's as big as, could be as, as big as any other structure we build on here.
The ordinance, as it essentially was written, that we decided not to submit.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk about the fact that we decided not to submit.
No, but that language was.
Yes, right, and so, and, and so, I mean, I, so, tell me if I'm wrong, this is, this is the setting that I would propose. Planning board is considering modifying the ordinance. We've thought about these kind of small systems that would, and there's a description of why we're thinking about them. And then, we've thought of what I'm gonna call medium systems, which, and then, we're actually not seriously considering larger systems because of the difficulty interconnecting. What do you say to that?
That's, that's why, I mean, you can really take whatever approach you want.
I think everybody says their own thing.
Yeah, everybody says their own thing.
And then we share it.
And then we hammer it out.
Yeah.
And, and I agree, we, we need to put this to bed, one way or the other. It's enough time spent on this. We have, we've been talking about the housing thing for ages, I think we should get on it. And let's, let's wrap this up one, one way or another.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to start out.
We, we have learned, I mean, I think it was really valuable. We learned a lot, and mostly, I learned how profoundly ignorant I was last year, and now I'm slightly less ignorant. So, I think it was time, time well spent, but it's enough. Can I bring up a question or a topic? Of course. Related to solar, related to one of the things that we got from David. And that was the, the stuff from Eversource, the transmission mapping. In his email, the guy from Eversource indicated that there were differing capacities, or the system had differing amounts of power that it could accept at different spots. But when I clicked on that map.
Only one number?
There was 200 kilowatts.
Oh, I was seeing.
Point two megawatts was.
I was seeing 12 and something.
Was all that it could take. And, and I go back to Mark's handout, and, and he indicates the same thing, that Eversource can only take 200,000, or 200 kilowatts. So, I'm just wondering if I, if anybody else looked at that, or whether I missed it, or something, but I clicked.
I didn't see that.
From, you know.
I got a different number.
Down on Hughes Lane all the way to.
So, Rich, do you think, that was Connor Jennings is the guy from who I've been talking to. I actually sent him an email, and I'm not sure if he got it, because it was some mix-up. But after I got this, I sent him an email asking him if it would still be possible to have Nate Dunford come, who's the engineer that he had talked about. You know, so do we, I guess the question is, do we feel that we still would like to try to get an engineer here at our meeting from Eversource, is it necessary? You know, to, and maybe to answer some of the things we don't know about. Or maybe it's not necessary at this point, I don't know. I mean, I guess Connor Jennings felt when he sent that email with all that information, he thought, well, that's gonna cover something that we need to know, we really don't have to have a senior to do it with.
So, I was reading the email, it says, it indicates there's between 0.05 and 1 megawatt of available capacity on the circuit, where there's street-based power.
Yeah, and I, I couldn't, I couldn't see that, wherever I clicked on that red line, I couldn't see that.
But I don't think we care, I mean, I don't think.
Well, I'm thinking we might care, or that might be a justification, is that the power lines are sized for this, so we're gonna, that could be one criteria, is that we're gonna limit things to what the power lines are. But that can change?
Yeah.
That will change. Well, it could, but everything's arbitrary, and that just happens to be our, our, I mean.
Maybe years before it changes.
Well, then, if you, if you did wanna limit like that, you would, you couldn't use language saying, limited by the, whatever the power lines could produce, it would have to be a hard number. Yeah, but I, yeah, it would be, definitely be a hard number, and the reason we came, that, one of my reasoning might be, well, that's, that's the only thing that they could take at the time, and, you know, if they upgrade their lines or tell us that they've got way more capacity relatively easily, then two years from now, we can change it.
One, one megawatt array is all that there's a capacity for in town.
That's good, that's 25% of our residential demand.
So, but I'm saying, you don't, so you don't need to, you don't need to include the stipulations in any ordinance, because it's just a natural characteristic of the system. And if a developer wants to come in and upgrade a line, you know, you're not gonna write more ins to say, you can't.
Well, let's say that, I mean, I, I think it's very likely that at a certain point, New Hampshire is gonna join the rest of the world and say, 5 megawatts is, is doable. is gonna join the rest of the world, and say, five megawatts is, is doable. So, you know, that would change.
You mean, upgrade the, upgrade the grid?
Well, first they have to say you can do it, and then that will provide the motivation and the profit motive for either, you know, the commercial companies, or even the utilities to.
But how, how does, you guys probably know, how, what does that mean upgrading the grid? Is it in the whole town? In other words, if you dump one megawatt, I mean, you're within a thousand feet of the lot. So you dump it into the three-phase, so it's pushing it all out. How far do you have to upgrade to?
Back to the substation.
Well, they might have to hang.
All the way back to the.
They might have to hang new wires on the poles. So from Scotty Bailey's house, they might have to.
All the way to the substation.
Run fatter wires, which would be, you know, the difference from this to this, it wouldn't, wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't suddenly.
But it would go back to the substation.
But that would be a one megawatt, if you got to five megawatts.
Well, I mean, if, if they heard, if they got wind that there was, you know, somebody else was gonna do one across the street or something like that, they would just put heavier-duty wires in.
Well, they're also upgrading the poles, so I mean, they, they use stouter poles, taller poles, intentionally, yes.
We'd only have to go directly from here to the substation, not, not that, because electricity wouldn't be going into the rest of the town.
Well, it's the substation that has to be able to spread it out.
It's like water. It's the lowest point of resistance.
Right, so the back of the substation, and then, and then, right, then the lower wires would go out.
All right, so everybody's gonna, when, when should everybody have their?
When's our next meeting? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Twenty-seven, I believe.
Twenty-fifth.
Sorry, twenty-sixth.
So, what do you think is a reasonable time for?
Well, it should be submitted by next week, so that David can get it out.
So by next Thursday? What's the date on it? Today is?
Eleven.
The is.
Eighteenth.
How about the minutes?
It's eighteen.
Friday, Friday's the nineteenth, so now we can.
So what date are we choosing?
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Or nineteen, the end of the week, okay.
Right, the end of the nineteen.
Not a week from now, okay. Gives us an extra day.
Yeah, so everybody will be working in the, the four, four o'clock.
Well, if you send it on Saturday morning, I don't think we're gonna send it. No, too late.
That's right, yeah. This is not why you.
Yeah, I mean, actually, to that point, why don't we just say first thing Monday morning? Because David's not gonna be doing it. Why don't we say Monday the, whatever that is?
Twenty-two?
Right.
Did anything to push it off. We'll get Monday the twenty-second.
So do we have the language of the current, the ordinance that was gonna be proposed? Is that?
I have, I have a copy.
Because that would be helpful to.
I'm sure, I'm sure David.
I think it's on the website.
Well, I'm sure David has it.
So.
This is, this letter from Jennings' client. Here you can view the hosting capacity map, detailing an available capacity of the circuit that serves most of line. You can zoom into the maroon shaded lines running.
Yep, we did that.
You did that, yeah.
The pop-up window is, doesn't include the capacity. It tells how many volts, kilovolts the line is.
Yeah, the maximum allowable connective load, or something like that.
You can see that.
Yeah, and that's where it says two.
Well, maybe we don't really need an engineer to come here, because he's a, I mean, he's only gonna tell us the same stuff, probably.
Yeah, let's go with our write-up and see where that leads us, and if we end up with something that, where we need more input, we'll.
Yeah, they might not even send somebody anyway.
So the idea of this is we really are going to share this out with the town?
That's my thought.
Good, good.
What, I think we need to be able to explain why we're doing what we're doing.
After you've written your blurb, if you can structure your questions to be like survey questions, that's sort of a clarifying style of declarative, answer it in yes, no, or one, two, three, or that kind of.
All right, I'll do my best.
Yes.
And, and should I answer the question that just popped up? The solar, I just went to the town website, and I typed the word solar in the search engine up top, and it was about the fifth lady in town.
So it's there.
Proposed solar zoning amendment.
Great.
So, that's close enough to what, I mean, it's probably our final language, because it was from November second.
Yeah, I think that's probably, and if not, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it. All right, anybody have anything else? All right, I'd like to propose.
I was gonna say, you sent out a link to the, from Jan Williams, to look at the zoning atlas, right? And so everybody really should take a look at that.
I've already, I mean, I, I knew about that a couple of days before.
O S P, or whatever they, they are now, yes, but everyone should take a look at it. If people in town are talking about it and saying, oh, line is terrible. I mean, if you look at it, it's like most of the town allows residences across the town, so.
It's not very.
That's what I got. So it's not a negative.
Well, the thing is, is that it's a single family.
It's done from a very high level, so, so that.
But it allows residences everywhere.
If you, if you come down and look at stuff, a lot of the, there's plenty of things we could do with zoning, but a lot of the issues are non-zoning issues. There are definitely zoning issues that can be addressed as well.
But compared to Hanover, where the whole eastern part of town is, you know, the mountain forests, it's, it's a lot different. You know, so line looks pretty good, so I don't know why she was like so.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, yeah, she probably understands.
Well, half of the town is not.
Somebody else, somebody else contacted me about that same impression.
Yeah, well, it's hard. People don't really understand how things.
But I, look, this is neither here nor there. People, people have different opinions, and.
Well, I think you need to ask, is that, are you thinking that's good or bad? Because it's not clear how people interpret, and so you need to go a little further about, well, why, and why do you feel that way? If somebody talks about.
The fact that it was single-family residences on acre-plus lots is, when I was reading the actual St. Anselm work that they.
Yeah, I already, yeah, but I didn't, I didn't, it was, it's terrible, and actually.
And work, work is, by contrast, is all mixed use.
Well, so look at Canaan as well, but Hanover stands out, because half the town, you can't live there, and, you know, and that's big.
Anyway, it's just a starting point for the special.
I understand, but everyone should look at it, just because other people in town will.
Yeah, so, do you have a link to that?
You sent it to me.
Okay, so, why don't you send it to everybody?
You sent it already.
Oh, I thought you were, you were sending that.
No, no, you did, you already did.
Okay, so everybody has it. That's good news.
But that doesn't mean anybody's looked at it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're telling people to look at it. I thought, like, my God, is that something I didn't send?
No, no, no.
It's also on Daybreak, so a lot of people saw it there.
All right, so, here we are.
There we go.
Shall we shut it down? At, at eight?
Well, the, the public is still.
Could I, could I get a copy of what you're talking about?
No, sir, I'm afraid that would be impossible.
Do you, do you get Daybreak?
Will you send it to them?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Okay.
It was in Daybreak, a link to the St. Anselm.
Tim is gonna send it to you.
I, I think I still have it. I'll send it.
A link to the St. Anselm study of all the zoning rules in the state.
Well, the study, I mean, I think what people are reacting to is the atlas and the visual, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
But the link to it was in Daybreak.
Okay.
All right, wonderful.
And then.
Cut!